Hello. Before we officially begin tonight's meeting, I have some really sad news to report. Dr. Charles Chuck Nippert, our dear friend, colleague, and fellow board member, passed from this earth on Sunday evening, May 11th, at approximately 10 o'clock. Chuck joined the Potts Grove Board of Directors on December 8th, 2017, and was re-elected for a second term in November of 2021, serving a total of eight years. Most recently, Chuck served as the chairperson of our Operations and Finance Committee, was a member of our Athletics Co-Curricular and Community Relations Committee, a member of the Joint Operating Committee of the Western Montgomery Career and Technology Center, and he also represented the Potts Grove School Board on the Montgomery County Intermediate Units Legislative Committee. There's an empty seat at our table tonight, and Dr. Nippert will be sorely missed by all of us. Chuck's wife Carolyn asked me to announce the following. There is a viewing planned this Friday, 5:16, from 5 to 7 o'clock at the Dangler Sowers Funeral Home and Crematory in Birdsboro, Pennsylvania. There is a funeral planned this Saturday, May 17th, from 9:30 to 10:30, and then a luncheon at St. Gabriel's Episcopal Church. And afterwards, the family will head to Allentown for a gravesite burial. Carolyn asked me to please attend if you choose to. She is hoping that people come. At the completion of our pledge of allegiance to the flag, I'd like everyone to remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of our dear friend, fellow board member, Charles Nippert. Let's rise for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Before beginning the meeting, is there anyone that would like to make any comments regarding Dr. Nippert?
I'll start off. Chuck was a wonderful man, a good friend, a good leader, loved his family. Family was first, community was first. He was a great man. He was a tinkerer. He liked to tinker. He was an engineer, so he was always thinking and tinkering. But there are so many things that we'll miss, not only his presence, but I always try to know he's in our hearts, he's in heaven, he's not in any pain. I ask for everybody to pray for peace and strength for his wife and family this difficult time. I'm missing him as a friend. But then when I pulled up here today, I didn't see his car, because usually when he parks, he takes four parking spots. Or we'll have to help, we'll have to... That was him in the blue car all the time. Yeah. But we would have to help him with his, not forgetting his hat, or his speaker was on and it shouldn't have been. So we cherish the fun times we had with him, and we keep him alive because he loved Potts Grove and everything about it. So rest in peace, Chuck.
I can add to that. And so seated next, I was fortunate enough to be seated next to Chuck for the two years I've been on the board. And I would almost consider him almost like a mentor going through this process. And if there's one thing I can say about Chuck was, I will greatly miss his wit and humor. He had a way of telling stories that was always engaging for the public and for the board as well. And he was really passionate about the students here, especially the students he helped with things like the TSA organization and whatnot. And I know he'll be sorely missed by everyone in the district, and definitely me. It's definitely strange to sit here right now and not have him next to me. Absolutely, keep his friends and families in your thoughts. If you can make it to the service, that would be very appreciated. Thank you.
If I could just add, sometimes you hear people talk about greatness, and I think more than greatness is goodness. In his heart, he was so good. As a board member, I interact frequently with board members, and I really appreciate how much he cared about you all, this community, this school. So I will miss him dearly.
I know at times Chuck drove us a little crazy. And he'd so often go off topic and kind of, you know, just be a little lost sometimes, but that was just Chuck. He was kind of the absent-minded professor. And that will definitely be missed because it was always something that we could count on pretty much during every meeting. And I agree, to see the empty seat and know that he's not just out because of, you know, a family obligation or something, it tugs at your heart. And I really do, I feel for his family and his friends.
I have this older sister who just recently had a birthday. She's similar in age to Chuck. And when we were younger, my mother sent her to this elocution school to learn to talk good. It was called Miss Shelley's. And for a strange reason, I was talking to my sister, and I knew of Chuck's passing, and I made this connection between the two. And I thought of a poem that my sister had to memorize when we were younger. And my mother used to make her repeat it in front of my brother and me. It's a poem called "Roofs" by Joyce Kilmer. And in Chuck's memory, and because it's connected to my sister, I want to read just the fifth and the final verse of this poem, "Roofs." It says this: "They say that life is a highway, and the milestones are the years. And now and then, there's a toll gate where you buy your way with tears. It's a rough road and a steep road, and it stretches broad and far. But at last, it comes to a golden town where golden houses are. Bless you, Chuck, and may the Lord keep you in the palm of his hand." Let's begin our meeting. Agenda, first agenda item is the roll call, 1-3. Be noted that seven of the nine board members are present here. Louis is joining us virtually from Texas. Louis, you're with us?
Yes, I'm here. Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Louis. Moves us to Agenda Item 2, Public Comment. There are two public comment items on the agenda. The first is limited just to agenda items so that the board can hear a comment about any agenda items that are there. We ask that you limit your comments, if any, to about two minutes. Is there anyone in the room who has a comment they'd like to make about any of the agenda items? Jeff, is there anyone online or anyone for a public comment? Moves us to Agenda Item 3, Presentations, Recognition, and Awards. We have six presentations tonight. The first is Student Board Representative Recognition. Dr. Finney?
So we started this meeting off somberly, but we are gathered here together to celebrate some amazing students and some amazing staff members. And it is my privilege to start that celebration with one student in particular. So Cecilia Orlock has been with us for two years, has stepped up and represented her classmates and participated in our meetings, and been a wonderful student rep. And we're very proud of our two years together and very grateful for it. And we are sorry to see you go, but we wish you well in your next journey. And we did get a small token of our appreciation. So if I could ask Mr. Strunk in Cecilia, if you can kind of join us, and we'll get a picture taken for this, one last time to embarrass you. Yeah, we'll go over here in our normal well here. Thank you so much for all you've done. Students are instrumental in the work they bring a perspective, a student perspective to the work that we do, and a student perspective to the life at school, and how we can make that culture, that environment, and that learning experience even stronger than it is for the students. Cecilia has worked really hard at trying, at working to drive those improvements, and we appreciate all that you did. Congratulations, Cecilia.
This moves us to Agenda Item 3.2, Retiree Recognition. And to lead that is our Director of Human Resources, Amy Thompson.
Good evening. Glad I can do this in front of such a good audience this evening. So, good evening, board members and guests. We are here tonight to celebrate remarkable careers of nine dedicated members of the Potts Grove School District family who are retiring and five of who are here today. That includes Kim Emery, Susan McGuardi, Corey Rhodes, Sue Rutter, and Teri Koller. We're grateful also for the service of Teresa Wheeler, Raymond Moore, Jeff Smith, and Todd Hetrick. And I just want to, a couple little logistics here. As I say your names, please come up and stand. I'll share a few words about each retiree. Please hold your applause until the end. At the end, we will take a picture. And also, just so you know, each retiree receives a memento. It's the Potts Grove apple. Those with up to 10 years of service receive a red earth stone apple, and those with over 10 years receive a crystal apple. And apples are inscribed for each retiree. All right, so Kim Emery, we'll start with you. Come on up. So Kim Emery's journey and education began in 1989 when she joined Potts Grove as a certified school nurse at the Potts Grove Intermediate School, now the Potts Grove Middle School. Her commitment to student well-being led her to serve as a CSN at Lower Potts Grove Elementary, Ringing Rocks Elementary, and Potts Grove High School. For many years, she also played a vital role in educating 5th grade girls about menstrual hygiene, a topic that eventually became part of the formal health curriculum. Kim also served as a guest speaker in countless classrooms and held the position of Health Services Coordinator for 14 years, from the 2011-2012 school year through the school year presently. Kim's passion for education and healthcare is deeply rooted in her family history. Her father, Daniel Grulick, was a beloved history and economics teacher at Potts Grove High School from its opening in 1958 until 1989. He also served as Potts Grove Senior Class Advisor for over two decades. Her mother, Mary Grulick, was a kindergarten teacher at Ringing Rocks Elementary School from its opening in 1962. Inspired by her parents' dedication, Kim chose to dedicate her career to school nursing. Kim's passion for well-child care drove her to excel as a school nurse. She found immense satisfaction in helping students overcome obstacles and witnessing their growth into healthy, productive citizens. When asked about a defining moment in her career, Kim shared that it was the very moment she was hired as a school nurse, an opportunity that allowed her to combine her passion for education and healthcare and serve the Potts Grove community. Kim leaves us with this advice: "Always put your students first and take advantage of each teachable moment." She also wishes to express her gratitude. She extends a special thank you to our incredible nursing team for their unwavering help and support, with particular gratitude to Melissa Barber, RN, for her invaluable assistance over the years. Finally, Kim thanks the students and families of Potts Grove for trusting her, inspiring her, and helping her to grow. So next up, we have Sue McGuardi. She can come on up. Thank you. Okay, Sue. We're going to honor Sue, who's dedicated 27 years of service to the Potts Grove School District. Sue served as an administrative assistant to the principal at Lower Potts Grove Elementary School and as an administrative assistant to the Curriculum and Technology Directors at the District Office. Susan's connection to Potts Grove goes beyond her professional role. As she shared, "My children went to Potts Grove, and I was involved in the PTA at Lower Potts Grove, where I was able to get to know the administration and then apply for an opening." For Susan, the highlight of her career has been the relationship she has formed with colleagues and families within the Potts Grove community. As she moves into retirement, Sue looks forward to enjoying time with her grandchildren and traveling. Sue's advice to her colleagues is to choose to work collaboratively with others, and you will gain knowledge from them as well as share your knowledge. Sue would also like to thank the many dedicated administrators she has worked with throughout her career, all who have had a significant impact on her, both personally and professionally. She extends a special thank you to Jeff for making her feel like an important part of the IT team and to Daniel for welcoming her to the District Office and making her transition seamless. She says, "Thank you for making me feel appreciated, valued, and an important part of the team. I will miss our conversations." Corey Rhodes, come on up. We also celebrate Corey Rhodes, who's dedicated 31 years of service to the Potts Grove School District. Corey's career includes serving as playground aide at West Potts Grove Elementary School, a library aide at West Potts Grove Elementary School, secretary to the assistant principal at Potts Grove High School, and most recently, secretary to the principal at Potts Grove Middle School. Corey's connection to the Potts Grove community is also a personal one. As she has shared, "I raised my family in Potts Grove." A highlight of Corey's time at Potts Grove was working with both staff and students. She especially cherished getting to know students of all ages and feeling like she made a difference in their lives. In her retirement, Corey looks forward to spending time with her husband, her children, and their families, doing fun things with her grandbabies and taking the time to enjoy life's little things. She also loves to read and go to the beach. Corey leaves us with an important reminder. Throughout all my years working with staff and students, remember the reason you are here, the children. You never know what's going on day to day in a child's life. This comes to school with them. Sometimes a child just showing up is all they can do. Okay, Susan Rutter. You're here. So Sue Rutter has dedicated 26 years to education, all of which were spent here at Potts Grove Middle School. During her time at Potts Grove, Susan taught 6th grade science, 7th grade ELA, 7th grade American history, 6th grade ELA, and 6th grade world history. Sue's connection to Potts Grove runs deep. As she says, "Potts Grove is my home. I graduated from Potts Grove. I went to kindergarten through 12th grade at Potts Grove. My mother graduated from West Potts Grove High School in 1948." For Susan, the most rewarding part of her career was her daily interactions with her students. She is filled with joy and gratitude when she reconnects with former students, now adults thriving in various roles in the community. She shared a recent example of taking her pet to the veterinarian and discovering the vet was one of her former students. This, she says, "fills my heart with joy to know that I have contributed a small portion of her success in making her dreams come true." Susan feels it's a high honor to have taught in her alma mater for 25 years, 25 as a teacher and one as a substitute. Susan and her family will be relocating to Fenwick Island, Delaware. She and her husband own several rental properties in Fenwick Island and Ocean City, Maryland, and plan to enjoy providing short-term rental services to the tourists who visit the beach. They also look forward to watching their daughters flourish as they finish their last two years of high school. Susan's advice to her colleagues is, "Make friends with your colleagues and make memories. Have fun and enjoy your students. Bring a happy face to your classroom every morning. Spread your sunshine every day." Susan would like to thank all of her former Potts Grove teachers and administrators, saying, "I looked up to the Potts Grove teachers that taught me important life lessons every day. My administrators inspired me to push myself to become the best version of myself in the classroom." She also thanks her parents, both deceased, for instilling in her a love of learning. And finally, Teri Koller. We also celebrate Teri Koller, who dedicated 35 years of education, with 18 of those years spent here in the Potts Grove School District. Teri's career at Potts Grove includes serving as assistant principal at the middle school from 2027 to 2029, working with grades 6 through 12 on curriculum and assessment from 2029 to 2021, principal at West Potts Grove Elementary from 2011 to 2018, principal at Lower Potts Grove Elementary from 2019 to 2024, and most recently, as our pre-K counts coordinator and interim principal at Ringing Rocks. When asked about a highlight of her career, Teri spoke of the opportunity to work with thousands of students and their families. Seeing their successes and achievements over the years have been incredibly fulfilling. She also cherishes the relationships she has formed and counts many colleagues, former parents, and former students as dear friends. One of her most treasured memories of Potts Grove is how the community supported her and her husband when they lost their son in 2019. The care, concern, and support they received from the entire Potts Grove community is something she will never forget. Teri and her husband are both retiring and look forward to going on adventures in their camper and cleaning out their garage. She also looks forward to having more time to craft, read, and join her retired friends on more adventures. Teri's advice to her colleagues is, "Never underestimate the power of positive relationships with colleagues, students, families, and the community." Teri would like to thank Debbie Brilla, the first person she met in Potts Grove, for being such a good friend. She also thanks all of her past and current administrators, teachers, and staff for their support over the years, saying there are too many to name, and she wouldn't want to forget any. Thank you, Teri. Board members and guests, please join me in expressing our sincere gratitude to all of our retirees for their many dedicated years of service. We wish you all a happy, fulfilling retirement. Susan gets an apple, too. It's just on its way still. She knows that. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is our high school principal, Dr. Felicia Gonzalez. And there are three topics that she is going to facilitate for us. We have a group of students who go to the Western Center, and recently, those of them who are involved in health occupations have received awards at HOSA, which stands for Health Occupation Students of America. We also will get an update on our student trip to Costa Rica. And thirdly is a VITAM, which she will talk about. Dr. Gonzalez?
All right, good evening, everyone. So I have quite a few things of high school highlights to share. On March 26th and through the 28th, students at the Western Center competed at the PA HOSA, Future Health Professionals 2025 State Leadership Conference in Competition. This means that students from across the state competed in a variety of events, a bunch of competitions requiring a combination of both knowledge and demonstrated skill. Students who finished in 10th place and above their respective events were given recognition by the PA HOSA. Here today, we have seniors Zachary Strunk, Gabriel Fuentes, and Marlee Flannery. I'm going to invite them up here so that they can share some of their experience with HOSA.
Hi, I'm Marlee Flannery, and the Health Student Occupation Association has provided me with several opportunities. For example, I've received two state titles and two national experiences for the Interviewing Skills Event, and Penn HOSA has also awarded me a $2,000 scholarship to pursue my education in the nursing career. I think Penn HOSA is an amazing foundation because it provides students who want to go into the healthcare field with more knowledge and with several symposiums.
My name's Zach. This is my first year at HOSA, being involved in the HOSA. This is my first year at HOSA, being involved in the HOSA organization. I was second place in sports medicine, and I think something I really enjoyed about HOSA was just being able to take what I've learned and been practicing in my class for the past three years and get to showcase my skills and knowledge. And I think it was really an enjoyable experience and something that I'll remember for the rest of my life.
Hello, my name is Gabriel Fuentes. My score was 10th in medical and ethics, and I think HOSA was really great. I learned so much there, I met a lot of wonderful people, and I thought that was really, really great. It was a lot of fun being there and just competing, and I had a lot of fun there and met a lot of great people, kind of how I ask for better.
All right, thank you. Next, we have AVIDAM. We had the opportunity to lead AVIDAM club at the high school. This is the third year of implementation, and it has grown into the biggest club with the most membership at the high school today. Here we have with us today is Marco Desiderio, who is the club advisor and also a biology teacher at the high school, and some members of the club. We have freshman Alvin Washington, sophomores Jordan Longacre, and senior Ruwan Musa to talk a little bit more about AVIDAM. They actually decided they want to play their video first.
Hello, everyone. Oh, all right. Sorry, this is new. So my name is Jordan Longacre, and... So my name is Jordan Longacre, and I am a current sophomore at Pots Grove High School. I am also the current AVIDAM vice president, soon to be president moving into the next 25, 26 school year. And I am very excited for what we can do with movement through our organization into the high, well, middle school, we're already in the high school, and really how important it is to instill this into our youth and teach them it's okay not to be okay, because that affects everything about your lifestyle, your grades, your choices. It affects everything, and it's really important that I think we speak on it. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Alvin Washington. I'm currently a freshman at Pots Grove High School. And AVIDAM, like, really widened my eyes to mental health, because usually I always prioritize my mental health, but like, I didn't like make it like my biggest priority in life sometimes. Like, most of the time, I like prioritize grades, friendship, over myself sometimes, just to like, so every, like, around me, like, can feel like, like, so everyone can feel like positive around me, but I don't never like take care of myself. So AVIDAM really opened my eyes to that, and it really showed me a lot of people to look up to, people to admire and aspire to be. And it's a really cool club, and it's great how we're bringing it to other schools, and especially the middle school, since I know they need it. But it's a, it's a great club to be in, so.
Hello, everybody. My name is Ruwan Musa. I am a senior at Pots Grove High School, and I am the current president of AVIDAM. AVIDAM to me is more than just a club. It is a safe space for students to feel welcome, to feel heard and seen. A lot of people in our school and the middle school often feel like they're alone in what they're going through, but that is simply not the case. When I was in middle school, I myself struggled with depression and anxiety, and that later led to an eating disorder where I was hospitalized. During my hospitalization, I found a community where we could talk, and we could cry, and we could laugh together. But then, when I got better, and I got out of it, I got out of the hospitalization, I lacked that community again. I didn't have that camaraderie. But then I got into high school, and the AVIDAM club was formed. I found my people, I found my community, and I found my safe space. I was able to share my thoughts, my feelings, and I was able to help other people feel welcome and feel like they're not alone. And that is the true purpose of the AVIDAM club. Thank you very much.
Good evening, parents, students, board members, fellow faculty. Dr. Gonzalez, Dr. Finetti, thank you for this opportunity this evening. I am Mr. Desiderio, high school biology teacher, junior class advisor, golf coach, and advisor to AVIDAM, co-advisor. I could not have led this program and have achieved what we did without these three and many other leaders and members of this club here at Pots Grove High School, as they all eloquently said so well. AVIDAM is to shatter the silence of the stigma to mental health. We believe firmly that mental health equals physical health. We understand that it's something that has significantly have risen quite a bit since 2020, the COVID era. As important as education is in empowering our students to be future leaders and harnessing that knowledge is power, something that we don't really spend a lot of time in, in regards to education, is probably on compassion and empathy, and, you know, self-advocacy and self-care. And as Ruwan so bravely shared, it is something that goes hand in hand with everyday life. As Jordan mentioned, it's something that affects all of our personal choices, our professional choices, how we learn, when we learn. And I firmly believe, as a faculty leader and an advisor of AVIDAM, that there are many students that are home and may not receive the love or the stability that they need. The students that are at home and are happy come to school to learn. The students that are at home and lack instability or mental health support come to school to be loved. So, as a beacon of light, we wear these bracelets, not just as a reminder to our students that they are not alone and that we have their back, but as a staple to let them know that they are a beacon of light. Three years ago, we were the smallest club in the school, and three years later today, we are the largest club in the school. As many of them said, we are more than a club, we are a mission. And with all of the community's support, parents, siblings, teachers, we have grown profoundly, and I'm just looking forward to see the way that this can grow and spread like a positive brush fire with all of your warm support and the backing of your students, so they can once again not only understand that mental health does equal physical health, but it is something that makes a difference as a community when we come together and support each other for a better way of life. Thank you for the opportunity tonight, and let's give these young ladies and these gentlemen a round of applause again for representing AVIDAM. It's been my honor, my pleasure to serve the Pots Grove community and be an advisor to the AVIDAM club. Thank you, everyone.
While they're getting a picture, I'm going to just share a little bit of their news. On Thursday, our AVIDAM club is going to be presenting via Zoom link to all of the superintendents of Montgomery County on what they've done here and the positivity that they've brought to this school. I'm very proud of it, and I get to sit there with a bunch of superintendents and take a bow. So I appreciate your work and appreciate the positivity that you've brought here. So thank you.
So I did have the pleasure of playing in Doom Dome on the teacher team, and it was quite the intense game that I recovered for, for about two weeks after. Next, we have, this is our final group, I promise. We have our Costa Rica trip. We've had the amazing opportunity to travel to Costa Rica this past spring break with an awesome group of students. Christina Mortimer, who's an 8th grade learning support teacher, brought the international trip to Pots Grove. Christina Mortimer, who's an eighth grade learning support teacher, brought the international trip to Pots Grove through a company called EF Tours. She's gonna talk a little bit more about the trip and we also have a few students to share their experiences. We have sophomore Lilly O'Brien, senior Rowan Musa.
Hello, everybody. First of all, I just wanna say thank you so much for your support and allowing me to bring this program to Pots Grove. It has already paid back in dividends. It's been incredible to read the feedback from students. And it's just been really, as a teacher, it's been an incredibly rewarding experience. So, thank you very much. We had 35 students that spent spring break in Costa Rica with five chaperones. And before the trip, if you could go ahead and click on there, thank you. Alright, there we all are. And just click one forward. Thanks. Okay, so before we left for the trip, these, the students had to fill out a form so we could really get to know them. I am a middle school teacher, so I don't know a lot of these high school students. And these were the types of concerns that they had. They were worried about safety, they were scared for ziplining, the flights, being so far away from home, who their roommate was gonna be, flying without their family, forgetting something, being in another country, being away from family. What if they couldn't find something to eat that they liked? Getting separated from the groups, bugs, spiders, snakes, and howler monkeys. I mean, these are, these are real concerns. Preparing these travelers, we prepared for a little over a year, well, almost a year. And these were the concerns, like, really all they could think about was like, who am I gonna share a room with? What am I gonna eat? They were humongous things that they were concerned about. And as soon as we started traveling, the bond that developed between this group was incredible. The kids were fantastic, they were so respectful, they represented your district, you would have been very proud, kind to each other, kind to others. Any little hiccups that we encountered on the tour with any students, everybody showed grace and patience and supported each other. I was just beyond proud of them. I have just two quick little videos for you and then you'll get to see, just, this is just a little snapshot of how their thoughts just developed so much. This is how they filled out the forms beforehand and you'll get to see how they answered them afterwards. So, it's just a quick little snapshot into our week.
Quick little...
Thank you. If you can go to the next slide, please. Alright. So, it was a lot of girls, we only had nine boys out of 30. So, a lot of the feedback is from the girls. But I do just wanna read these to you, just so you can kind of gauge where their minds are at after the trip. Mara said, "My perspective on life now is to be very grateful for everything I have and that it's okay to try something new because I may end up loving it in the end." Lauren said, "The most challenging part was traveling without my family, but the group made it very organized." Maggie said, "I will carry that mindset of living in the moment and taking in everything around me because a day like today will never happen again." Arabella said, "It was a huge cultural shock and I'm grateful for my life in the United States." Lily, who's here with us, she'll share herself, but I loved this comment. "I would tell future travelers, just do it, because you only live once and it could be the best time you ever have. Take it all in and don't rush through activities, meet new people and make new friends." Eliana shared, "I am most grateful for the people who talked to me and made me feel included and not feel like an outsider." Ariana shared, "I'm most grateful to have experienced getting out of the country and doing it while surrounded by a group of people, as well as getting to meet more people." Tanner shared, "I will carry Costa Rica into my daily life by being more patient and not letting little things ruin my happiness." Jody shared, "My advice, even if you don't like the activity that you're set to be doing, still look forward to it because in the end, you'll probably end up having a really fun time." Megan, "I really liked getting to know a lot of new faces that I never really came across before in school." Jocelyn, "I've now seen how isolated and skeptical individuals in the United States are compared to individuals in Costa Rica. It's sad and I wish that we could live in peace more like they do." And finally, Aiden, "Unexpected friendships were made, don't be scared to talk to new people." I could have made you 50 slides with these comments. The kids overall were just so shocked at how there could be people in their school that they didn't know, but that were actually so cool, like, where had these people been hiding? The trip just gave them an opportunity to connect with each other across grades, across social status, economic status. And it really just created bonds that they'll have forever. One more quick thing, just so it doesn't look like all fun and games, I just wanna quickly read you what we did while we were there. We ziplined through the Costa Rican canopy, took a sustainability tour of a local farm, participated in an ecological workshop where we made soap and then learned about the local pottery and how to process sugar cane. We took a cooking class and made empanadas, we visited and swam in thermal springs, we snorkelled at the Playa Hermosa, we visited the Recon de la Vea National Park. Should've had Lily read that. We visited the city of Liberia and even shopped at a Walmart in Costa Rica. We learned how chocolate was made from cacao and then we made some ourselves. We took dance lessons with the locals in a cultural exchange where they taught us their dance moves and we taught them how to wobble. We took a boat tour of the Canyon Negro Wildlife Refuge in Los Chiles. We visited and swam underneath the La Fortuna waterfall, took a tour of the brick coffee plantation, toured a pineapple farm and learned about the harvesting process and the migrant workers of Honduras. We ate pineapples fresh off the plant. And then finally, we got a break from rice and beans by trying a McDonald's and a Pizza Hut in San Jose, the capital of Costa Rica. So, what did you guys do on your spring break, right? It was incredible. Again, thank you so much for the opportunity. We currently have 45 students and a waitlist who are signed up for next spring break to get to travel to Italy. So, thank you.
In case you already forgot, my name is Rowan. The Costa Rican trip was an experience unlike anything I've ever had. I have traveled outside the country before, but this trip was amazing in so many different ways. I met people from my school that I didn't even know existed and we had so much fun together. And, you know, how many people can say that they swam in a waterfall in Costa Rica? I mean, that was amazing. The memories I had, that I made in Costa Rica, I will carry with me for a lifetime. I am so grateful for Ms. Mortimer for making this possible and all the chaperones who attended and the friends that I made along the way and the experiences that I will never, ever forget. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lilly and I'm a sophomore. So, with Costa Rica, I was able to meet new people on this trip and I was able to step out of my comfort zone by getting to know everyone. And one thing that I'll always remember is that we got to walk around the city with our, like, friend group and go shopping and get food together. And I also really enjoyed getting Spanish practice and being able to, like, communicate and order ice cream if I wanted. And I just really liked getting familiar with the Costa Rican culture and it was really cool to see how together everyone was. And it was just a really cool experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, you've heard about the leadership that Dr. Gonzalez and her team are developing at the high school. But we're also developing leaders in our elementary schools. Mrs. Susan Shannon is a guidance counselor at Lower Pots Grove Elementary School and she's here to talk about Lower's student leadership team. What I found most amazing as I was reading about this presentation is, listen to this. The Lower Pots Grove Elementary School's fifth grade student leadership team was one of 47 schools nationwide and the only school in Pennsylvania to be awarded the American Student Council School of Excellence Award. The only school in Pennsylvania. That's good. Mrs. Shannon?
Yes, thank you. I'd also like to take a special moment and acknowledge Emily Panko, who's one of the student leaders, for going above and beyond for writing an essay for what she has learned and how she has grown as a student leader, which was also part of the application process. Here are a few lines of her essay. "I have learned, including things like obviously leadership, but also responsibility, commitment, communication with others. This taught me how to resolve and plan for things ahead of time. It taught me life lessons, especially dedication and perseverance. We were doing stuff that would make kids even happier. Those food drives were all of the student leaders doing. The kids who needed food got food because of us. Seeing all the kids content in school made me proud of myself." I would like to introduce the Lower Pots Grove student leaders. Cassandra Arcilla, Kimani Carlton, Lillian Cuscone, Ben Ginich, Sophia Freer, Maggie Flaherty, Matty Fray- or Hadley Frain, Michael Franz, Gabrielle Frederick, Janalise Gonzalez Rivera, Madison Harner, Esther Howard, Paisley Martin, Avery McCandless, Ian McMichael, Keith Milkie, Taylor Miller, Emily Panko, Emma Lynn Quinn, Gavin Rumberger, Eleonora Sissler McGinley, Yolana Snalage, Ethan Wages, Stella Wilson, and Emerson Young. I am so honored to work with these leaders and so proud of their accomplishment, accomplishments and for them making Pots Grove proud and shine. Introduce the student leaders again. They've become a little shy, these fifth graders. Just fist bump, say hello, there you go. Yep, guys, come around here.
Congratulations, students, to each of you. Parents, you should be very proud of them. Leadership is a good endeavor. Sadly, all this good work costs money. So, our last presentation of the night may not be the most exciting one, from what you've heard, but we have our business administrator, Ron Linky. Look, everyone's leaving, Ron. You know, you don't wanna hear Ron talk. I mean, good night, everyone, and congratulations to you.
I'm used to the love like this.
Every time Ron talks, people get up.
I'm used to this kind of love.
Our business update, Ron Linky.
Alright, thank you.
I said business, budget update.
At the last meeting, April 22nd, essentially, where are we at right now? At the April 22nd meeting, the board adopted the proposed final with a deficit of roughly about $906,000, which would require a 2.02% tax increase to balance the budget at that time. During that meeting, the board was concerned with some of the items that we had identified as potential budget reductions and was concerned about some of the services being reduced for the students. During that meeting, the board gave administration some direction as to where the budget should ultimately come in at. We were looking at anywhere between a range of 2.5% tax increase up to 3%, ideally, obviously closer to 2.5% was more acceptable. So, administration went back and we met and discussed what we wanted to try to add into the budget to fit within those parameters. So, what changed from the proposed final to where we're at as of today? So, at the top, on the top of the slide, we start with a $906,000 deficit, which is what the board adopted back on April 22nd. We added back the reach counselor. We added back a special ed teacher at the high school. We added some summer help for the tech department to help get the devices ready for the students in the incoming school year. We made an adjustment for unpaid leave that typically happens every year. We try to ballpark that estimate. Added back some contracted site, because I misread the slide, unfortunately, from the last meeting. We added a special ed teacher to Lower Pots Grove Elementary. We put the drug and alcohol counselor, which is a contracted position, into the budget. I think on the agenda for tonight, there is a teacher retirement that's built in the budget. And with all the staffing changes at office, he changes the retirement and social security subsidy that we get back from the state. So, at this point in time, the deficit with all those items in is at $1.17 million or approximately a 2.62% tax increase, whereas we're about the middle of where the board was looking to have come in with the budget. Next slide, Chrissy. So, what does this current budget iteration stand compared to the last year's budget? It's a $5 million increase over last year's budget or a 6.5% increases in total. And I won't go over the individual categories. But on the next slide, Chrissy, if you wouldn't mind. In those, the salary numbers, there's $486,000 worth of new staffing, which is those three teachers. There's one at Rocks, which was not in that list, that was already incorporated into the budget in the proposed final. We added back the two for high school and Lower Pots Grove. And included in the budget in the proposed final was a request for two instructional assistants. Those staffing requests totaled $486,000. The remaining salary increases are $1.1 million. That's about 3.7% over last year's budget. And the benefits increases are a million. 41.65% of those salary increases are just for retirement and social security alone. That's a half a million dollars of the million increase of benefits. Then we have our charter school increases, increases in contracted services and then the transportation vehicles. We have special education out placements, the new iPad lease, the pre-K count program, which is new for this budget year. Did not exist in the current budget year, even though we're operating it as though it's existing, it's not in the budget. We had some maintenance projects that we whittled down to only be focusing on Ringing Rocks in the middle school for next year and some music equipment that was being requested. All those add up to about $4.9 million of the $5 million increase over last year's budget. Next slide, Chrissy. So, our next steps is administration will continue to monitor the budget because we have until June 10th to adopt a final budget. So, we will continue to monitor for state movement of the budget or any cost reductions that we can see coming down the road. So, the next meeting on May 27th will provide another update where we might be at. And on June 10th, we are going to hopefully adopt a final budget. Any questions?
Ron, can I call your attention again to what you said about just looking at the salary increases of existing staff and the benefit increases of existing staff? increases of existing staff and the benefit increases of existing staff? So if I heard you right, the number is about one-point-four, one-point-five?
The salary increases alone on existing staff is one-point-one-million dollars.
Okay.
Local one-point-one.
Okay. And the benefits are?
About forty-one-point-six-five percent, which is just retirement and social security. All the raises is about a half a million dollars of that one-million-fifty increase in benefits.
So the reason that I asked Ron to highlight that is that is a structural increase that's built into our organization. These are the increases that we're going to incur every year. So this is either in increased revenue from state or federal or local. We're going to, these are the increases that we're going to have to meet. Does that make sense? Okay, thank you.
Was that it? Did you have something?
I thought you were saying you wanted to say something, that's why. It was a thank you. Okay.
This moves us to one of the highlights of the evening, our student board report. And combined with the report is an update on how you're both doing at this time of year, what's going on in your lives. Whatever you'd like, Cecilia.
I'll start with the report first. I know last time we talked about prom, but I'd like to highlight a couple of people I'd like to thank. Ms. Small, our librarian, did a lot of our bouquets for prom. She put in a lot of work for that, so we really appreciate her. If you guys want to support her business, you can follow her at Danny B. Funky on Instagram, and she's, that's what our store's called in Pottstown. And I'd also like to thank the Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services, the Office of Drug and Alcohol, and the PA Attorney General Community Drug and Abuse Prevention Program for funding post-prom. That event really gathered a crowd of people, and I really had a lot of fun there, so.
All right, guys. Our Pots Grove sports are over, but I would like to commemorate our lacrosse teams, which have both ended. During their senior nights, the boys' team won eleven to ten and got to celebrate Landon Nowitzki, Jason Harkins, Mason Creachley, Asher Hofstetter, and David Zhang, while the girls' team celebrated their senior CC hires, who just got her one-hundredth goal this season. As well, the Falcon Flood Frenzy took place on May seventh, which is a fundraiser for Special Olympics in which students and staff get sprayed by a fire hose. So we had a lot of people going to that, and they got sicked, so it's fun.
A weird, like, random event that, like, stuck with me was by the principal took place at Lower Pots Grove to celebrate the end of the first day of PSSAs. I thought that was a fun way to get kids to just breathe for a second and have fun, so that really stuck with me. And then we had the first field day on May fifth for Ringing Rocks, and I'd like to thank all the high school volunteers for helping out with the event and all the teacher coordinators that allowed students to get volunteer hours with this.
Yeah, and then it's AP test season, so I guess good luck on those, if there's any students listening, but, you know, people are starting to finalize the year, so that's looking interesting. And also, congratulations to Kamal Curry for breaking the twenty-one-year-old long jump record with twenty-three-point-seven feet, and now he has become a double Pac-10 champion. So, congrats.
And because this is my last meeting with you all, I'd like to thank you for sharing the time with me and for teaching me how to speak not only in front of you, but in front of a crowd. I've gotten more comfortable over the past two years, and that's really helped me present in front of not only classrooms, but in front of groups like this. So I really appreciated this opportunity and the opportunity you provide for the kids at our school. It's a great way to get kids to learn how to sit in front of a formal crowd and to be able to speak and be put on the spot, and that's really contributed to my life and will, I'll use it in my professional field. So I really appreciate the opportunity and sitting with you all and hearing about all the fun stuff behind the scenes. And yeah, it's been great sitting here with you guys, so I appreciate the opportunity. And I also like to thank Adam. We never really did the reports like this before, back and forth, so working with him has been great, and he's going to be great for you next year, and it's been great to sit next to you and do this together, so.
Thank you.
Adam, anything new from you?
Yeah, well, I'd want to say thank you. That's an awesome shout-out. And, I don't know, the year's ending, so, you know, college apps are coming in pretty soon. So I've been working on my jewelry, my testing, and I'm excited for next year's school board reports. So, you'll see me.
We're excited to have you back, and we're very appreciative, Cecilia, of all you've done. Thank you again.
Yes, that's the love.
Moves us to report of our superintendent, Dr. Finney.
All right, just one thing this evening. On May eighth, we had the pleasure of cheering on twenty-seven Pots Grove students at Montgomery County Special Olympics Track and Field Competition. The Pots Grove team was incredibly well-represented, and we had thirteen student volunteers, twenty-eight staff members, and a host of family and friends. Our Pots Grove family and friends really showed up. It was very impressive. Congratulations, job well done, to the student athletes, and many thanks to staff, students, and community members who showed up to cheer them on.
Thank you. We move to Agenda Item Six, Approval of Minutes, six-point-one minutes of April eight, twenty-twenty-five.
I'd like to make a motion, we combine and approve six-point-one and six-point-two together.
Motion and second to approve six-point-one minutes of April eight, twenty-twenty-five, and minutes of April twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five. And any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Number seven, granting of orders.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the payment of invoices for April twenty-twenty-five in the amount of three-million-eighty-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and eighteen cents as presented.
Motion and a second to approve the payment of invoices for April twenty-twenty-five. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? I didn't ask for discussion, I'm assumed, I apologize. Motion passes. Credit card details. We did both of those. Yes.
That's in there.
Thank you. Number eight, action items, personnel, resignation and retirements of professional staff.
I'd like to make a motion to combine personnel eight through one through eight-point-ten.
Motion and a second to approve eight-point-one through eight-point-ten. This is professional staff resignations and retirements, professional staff appointments, professionals and support staff, leave of absences, support staff appointments, support staff change in assignments, supplemental staff, athletic appointments, supplemental staff, the Pots Grove Store Program, the extended, and the extended school year program with additional staff, the summer success program staffing, and supplemental staff non-athletic appointments. Any discussion on any of these ten items? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Action item number nine, MCIU Board of Directors. Board members, in your folders, you have a ballot, a twenty-twenty-five ballot, to elect eight new board members to the MCIU Board of Directors. Our Pots Grove member is, Anika, Anique, sorry, her term is not up, so we have eight people we're voting for. One is a one-year term, the other seven are three-year terms. We're being asked to do two things. One is vote individually, complete this form, and turn it in to Chrissy before you leave tonight. She needs to get these and return them to the IU. So please do that before you leave. Second, we need to take a vote as a board on these eight members for approval, yes or no. So you need to just pause for a minute, think about how you're going to fill this out. If you're saying yes, then I would vote yes for all of them. If you're unsure, then the vote should be no. Any questions on what I'm asking here?
This is always hard because we don't really know them, and it's hard to vote on them. Any recommendations?
Yeah, the motion then.
Okay. So I make a motion that we approve nine-point-one.
Motion and a second to approve nine-point-one, which is the election of the nine members as listed on this ballot. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Action passes.
Please tell me that we got it correct.
Yes, you need to fill them out and give them to, I'm blanking on everyone's name tonight, Chrissy, before you leave tonight. I apologize.
Chrissy, can we just leave them in our folders?
Yes.
Thank you.
Agenda item nine-point-two, the board and committee calendars for school year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve nine-point-two.
Motion and a second to approve the school calendars, board and committee calendars for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Nine-three, we need to elect a board secretary for a term of four years ending on June thirty. Are there any nominations?
Nominate Ashley.
She's still on it.
Motion and second.
I didn't want to have the one now.
And she got it right.
Any other nominations? So we move nominations are closed, yes? Those in favor of Ashley say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Congratulations, Ashley, you have another four years. The, also need to appoint a board treasurer for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. This is a one-year term that we appoint each year. Patty is currently our board treasurer. We need a nomination for twenty-five, twenty-six.
I nominate Patty.
Second.
We have a nomination and a second for Patty. Are there any other nominations? Motion for nominations to close? Those in favor? Those opposed? Patty, congratulations.
Thank you for appointing the same treasurer. It makes my job a little bit easier.
Agenda item nine-point-six, our Dec Hockey. Nine-point-five Market Street Renewal. Thank you for corporate partnership. This is a contract with Mishok Physical Therapy.
I'd like to motion, make a motion, we approve nine-point-five.
Motion and a second to approve nine-point-five Market Street Renewal for corporate partnership with Mishok Physical Therapy. Any discussion?
I would just like to thank them for their sponsorship.
Any other discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Now, nine-point-six. Dec Hockey League is willing to pay for relocating, for recoding and striping the hockey rink arena.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve nine-point-six, and thank them.
Motion and a second to approve nine-point-six. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item nine-point-seven, approve a medical practitioner agreement with Montgomery County Intermediate Unit to provide medical practitioner review for the school year.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve nine-point-seven.
Motion and a second to approve nine-point-seven medical practitioner agreement. Any discussions? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item nine-point-eight, a sanction screening agreement with OIG Compliance Now LLC for mandatory sanction screening for the school-based access program.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve nine-point-eight.
Motion and a second to approve nine-point-eight sanctions, sanction screening agreement. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Nine-point-nine, agenda item, is a lease agreement for Apple Financial Services for a four-year lease for purchasing iPads.
I'd like to make a motion to approve nine-point-nine with an explanation for the community.
Motion and a second with a request for an explanation.
Yes, this is the lease to purchase over the course of four years, the iPads for the elementary buildings, all three buildings.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Agenda nine-point-ten, contract with Bucksmont Academy.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve nine-point-ten.
Motion and a second to approve the contract with Bucksmont Academy, nine-point-ten. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item nine-point-eleven, an independent contractor agreement with Genevieve Zvernik for psychological educational testing.
I'd like to make a motion to combine nine-point-eleven through nine-point-sixteen.
Motion and a second to approve nine-point-eleven through nine-point-sixteen. This includes an independent contractor agreement for psychological testing from two different practitioners, and approval of a regional-wide area network called a R-WAN network, approval for E-Rate filing, acquisition of a Linkit data warehouse, thank you, and renewal of our Toshiba copying and printing leases as well, and that was where we stopped, is that right? Yes. So nine-sixteen. Any discussion on any of those items? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Moves us to Agenda Item nine-point-one-seven, confidential settlement agreement for one student.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve nine-point-one-seven.
Motion and a second to approve the confidential settlement agreement for one student. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Items ten, which is the action items for education, ten-point-one, contract renewal with Pediatric Therapeutic Services for a board-certified behavioral analyst and a speech and language therapist.
I would like to make a motion, we combine and approve ten-point-one through ten-point-six.
Motion and a second to approve ten-point-one through ten-point-six, which is the Pediatric Therapeutic Services and the board-certified behavior analysis analyst, a contract with Hopewell Psychological, the affiliation agreement with Westchester for student teachers, also an affiliation agreement with Westchester for student counselors, conference attendance for Tech Talk Live, and conference attendance for the PICPA School District Conference. Any discussion on any of those items? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. A presentation, Agenda Item number twelve, Joint Operating Committee.
You skipped eleven-one.
Oh, yeah. I'm doing that frequently, aren't I? Agenda Item eleven policies, eleven-point-one, approval of three policies, six-sixteen, payment of bills, six-twenty-two, GASB, and eight-twenty-two, public access defibrillation program.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve eleven-point-one.
Motion and a second to approve eleven-point-one. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Moves us to Agenda Item twelve, twelve-point-one, report on the Joint Operating Committee. You have that in front of you, bit longer than usual. I apologize for that, but there was a lot of stuff that they went over that I think is important for you to hear because we'll be acting on it in the future. There were two presentations. The first was an establishment of a capital reserve fund for the Western Center. The goal here is to establish capital reserve that they are, or the administrative director, David Livinggood, was suggesting two-million-seven-hundred-thousand a year by twenty-nine-thirty. This is a contribution from the three sending school districts. The way he is recommending getting at that money is currently, each of the three districts has a bond payment that they are paying that was done for the expansion of the Western Center. That bond payment is completed on November fifteenth of twenty-eight. Dave's proposal was for the three sending school districts, once the bond payment is completed, to continue contributing those funds so that, in his mind, that would mean there's no additional money going to the Western Center, but we just keep paying what we were paying in the bond payment, and that money is put into a capital reserve fund. we were paying in the bond payment, and that money is put into a capital reserve fund. Prior to this, which would start after the bond payment is paid in 2028, he is asking for the Western Center to keep any unused school funds to start the reserve. They typically return those unused funds to the sending districts, and over the last 10 years, they have returned $3,167,891. The capital reserve payment would be calculated based on 60% average daily membership and 40% district proportion of market value, which comes from the Articles of Agreement. The next steps here in this, Mr. Livinggood is going to meet, I don't think meetings have happened yet, with the superintendents and the business managers to discuss this. He first presented it to the JOC. In October and November, there is a, they are planning a meeting with all 27 board members. This can't be passed unless the Articles of Agreement are changed to create a capital reserve fund. That calls for a, the, the actual board of the Western Center is the 27 members of the three sending school districts. The JOC is just a representative committee. So to make this change, there would be a meeting of all 27 of us in October, November of this year. They are planning to have a vote on the proposal in January and February of 26, and that voting in the proposal, what's, what's interesting, by the Articles of Agreement, you have to have a majority of all 27 board members, which would be 14 or more saying yes to the change, but there must be a majority vote in Springfield. Springfield has to approve it, or it doesn't go, which is the way the Articles of Agreement are written, driven by size of district, really, which has done it over the years. Let me stop there and see if there's any questions. I wanted to hear this. I think as we move forward and as Ron and Dr. Finnerty begin meeting with the Western Center, we just need updates to figure out where we stand in this. Any questions?
This is all new. This is something I've been wanting for years, to have a capital fund there. So if something breaks, because the school's getting older, and we can't, the kids are learning there, but they cannot do the work. That always gets misconstrued sometimes. But then we're not going to come back to Potts Grove, Springfield, or Upper Perk and say, well, we owe this now, and then how are we supposed to find the money?
Thank you, Patty. Any other discussion or questions? Think about that, and I think next step is going to be meetings with superintendents and business managers, as that goes on. The other presentation that was given at the Western Center meeting on May 5th was an update of the application and acceptance analysis for the 25-26 school year. The total number of applicants received was 286, total accepted is 220, which is a 76.9% acceptance rate. The other students are not seen as non-accepted, they're put on a waitlist, so they call them waitlisted. I have a breakdown there of the three sending districts. You can see that Potts Grove, 97 applied, 66 accepted, 68% acceptance rate. Springfield, 96 applied, 80 accepted, 83.3% acceptance rate. And Upper Perkyomen, 93 applied, 74 accepted, 79.8% acceptance rate. My next bullet, so you can see there, Potts Grove, we as a district have the largest number of applicants and the lowest acceptance rate. Period. What's interesting, when you break Potts Grove down, of the 18 programs offered at the Western Center, Potts Grove's acceptance rate is at or above 100% in 11 or 61% of the programs. How can it be above? Well, there are students who don't get their first choice, but get their second choice, so that counts it in and builds on the percentages, and it just makes the percentages a little off. What that means is that at the Western Center, with 61% of the programs, we're doing fine, and most of those programs have room that we could get more. So we're at 100% or above. Where you look at our waitlists or non-acceptances, the top three, which accounts for 80% of our people that don't make it, are cosmetology, welding, and carpentry. Cosmetology is 42% of our non-acceptances, and we also account for 51% of the total number of students applying for cosmetology. So the number of students who come from Potts Grove who are trying to get into the cosmetology program is twice the number of the students of Springfield, and is twice the number of the students from Upper Perkyomen. For whatever interest, we have a large body of students who are interested in cosmetology compared to the other two districts. Welding accounts for 19% of our waitlists, and carpentry for 17% of the waitlist. You can see on page two, which is on the back of this, Administrative Director David Livinggood then presented a proposal, so we're beginning to see some movement toward action in doing something about this. I know there are some of us who believe it couldn't come any sooner in terms of that. His suggestions, initial suggestions, I should say this is draft thinking, is to add an additional instructor to cosmetology, which would add an additional 10 students, a carpentry instructor, which would add 20 students, an electrical instructor, which would add 20, welding, which would add 20, and a full-time aide in cosmetology, and then increase the supplies budget for each of these. Welding would need additional ventilation and 16 additional booths for welding. Mr. Livinggood estimated that the above additions would increase the budget by $2,500,000, or a budget increase of 27.25% for salaries, equipment, furniture, and expansion. The next steps where we left it is that the JOC requested Mr. Livinggood to provide a more detailed proposal distributing the costs into a two-to-five-year timeframe, believing that most of the districts can't afford right now a one-year jump for the, the $2.2 and a half million. Any questions on that?
For a while now, it's been said that by Mr. Livinggood, that did not have room to take on worse students, but suddenly do, so did they figure out a way to fit worse students in there?
Looking at Patty. I believe the answer is yes, which I also, yeah, I understand your question, we can't, we can't take more, we can't take more, we can take more. I, I don't know how much of those costs is changing of walls, and I'm not close enough to it to know that. Patty, I look to you. Is there a better way to answer Jim than I'm answering him?
I think, just based on my conversations with Mr. Livinggood, I think it would be more appropriate to wait for the updated proposal, the more detailed proposal. I do know there's some non-instructional spaces that they are looking at, that they could possibly convert into instructional, and I think also how they schedule or instruct students can actually increase the number of students served. But I'm encouraged that we're. Yes.
I have PowerPoint presentations that were used at the JOC meeting on both of these first two presentations, both the capital reserve as well as the application. If any board member would like to see those PowerPoint presentations, just shoot me a text message or an email, and, and I'll send them over to you. They pretty much say what is there. The application breaks down numbers in much more detail for each of the sending school districts. So just let me know, and I can shoot them to you. This moves us to number two. On page two, Western Center reports. Mr. Livinggood reported that the assistant principal position has been posted, hasn't been received final approval yet, but he has posted it, has received four applications, three of them with career and technical education experience, and is planning interviews to start on 5/14 tomorrow. Or has it? Yeah, it would be at the, I think, next board, next board meeting. The position is in the budget, yes. The technical schools have a test called NOCTI, which stands for National Occupational Competency Testing Institute that they do yearly. This is a measure of how well students have the knowledge and the ability to demonstrate the technical skills that they were taught. The scores this year at the Western Center were good, but were down from the past year. 72% of the students who took it, 56% of them scored advanced, 26% scored competent, which is 34 students, for a total pass rate of 82%, which is the 56 and the 22 added. 22 students, or 17%, scored basic and did not pass. There was a 98% growth rate, which is a measure, there is a pre-NOCTI that is taken, and then there's the final NOCTI, so it's, did your scores improve from the pre to the final with the 98% growth rate? Passing is not a determin, not necessarily determinant of graduation here. So this not passing doesn't mean that the students won't come out of the program. It is a measure that is used and does not carry that level of weight with it. Correct, Patty? Next, Mr. Robert Rizzo, who is the Superintendent of Record for the Western Center, and also the Superintendent of Springfield School District, announced that he will be retiring effective August 1st of 2025, which is this year. 31 students were named Student of the Quarter at the Western Center. Seven of these are from Potts Grove. I like to give them a shout-out, we like to give them a shout-out. Keegan Bowers, 10th grade in Automotive Technology. Gabriel Schramm, 9th grader in Career Exploration Opportunities. Alvin Washington, a 9th grader in Computer Information Systems. Myron Hooks, a 10th grader at Potts Grove in the Culinary Arts Program. Paige Lombard, 11th grader in the Culinary Arts Program. Anika Baum, a 10th grader in Dental Occupations. And Nathan Freeze, a 10th grader in Electrical Occupations. If you guys happen to know them, congratulate them, let them know we at least mentioned them. If they are listening, congratulations to you, or if their parents, or if they're in the room, congratulations for Student of the Quarter. The Policy Committee, moving on, the Policy Committee, the JOC presented the second reading and approved the 12 policies that are listed there, and presented the first reading of policy 121, which is field trips. Finally, on page three, there's three items. The JOC approved the hiring of two instructors, Eric Hoffman, who is a new collision instructor, and John McEwen, who is a HVAC instructor. Both of them were present and introduced themselves. What's interesting to meet these people is you find people, here they do have teaching experience, but the wealth of their stuff is technical experience. They, they fixed collisions, they fixed cars, and they did HVAC repair, and now they're learning how to teach that stuff to young people. Some of them with the experience to do that. Very, very interesting mix. JOC approved, there's two approvals here, the Fox Rothschild Retainer Agreement for Solicitor for 25-26, and the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Services Agreement for three years from 25 to 28. Four dates I've listed there, Keystone Testing, May 12 to 23, May 20 is an in-service day and election day. Senior recognition and award ceremony is at 7:00 at Springfield High School on May 21st, in case you're interested or attending there. It is not seen as a graduation, it is seen as a completion of the technical school program. That comes back as treated as almost as a club, comes back to the high school, and then counts towards the graduation at the high school. But here it's a recognition ceremony and an award ceremony. And then student new orientation begins for the new year, May 28. The next meeting is Monday, June 2nd at 7:00 PM. Any questions on that report?
Two little things I'd like to add. It's a senior recognition, all the students that graduate will be receiving blue and gray ropes, so when they come home to their graduation, they'll be wearing the blue rope, so want to recognize them. And also, every two years, we appoint a new superintendent of record. Well, guess whose turn's next? Dr. Finnerty's next. So looking forward to having him over there, so. That's all, thank you, Jay.
Moves us to agenda item 13, Committee Items, Approval of the Operations Finance Committee Meeting of April 8, 2025.
I'd like to make a motion, we combine and approve 13.1 and 13.2.
This is a motion to approve the minutes of the April 8 Operations Finance Committee as well as the April 15 Curriculum Instruction and Technology Committee Meeting. Any discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? The motion passes. Moves us to 13.3, Report from Bill Thompson of the Policy Committee Meeting on April 22. And it looks like Bill is delegating this.
Good evening. Save the best for last, right? Policy here. So yes, the Policy Committee met on April 22nd. We had two new business policy items, but before that, for old business, we just reviewed policy 916 briefly verbally, which is about school volunteers. No changes were made, and we're going to keep the policy as it stands with the clearances and all of the elements that are combined with that. New business was these two policies, policy 828 Fraud, which is a new policy for the district, and is needed for some of our different grants. You have to have a fraud policy to make sure that, you know, you're protecting the money, and I know our business department's very happy to have this policy. And then the second policy that we addressed is policy 236.1, Threat Assessment, which has come to the Policy Committee before, back in November of 2022. However, PSBA was recommending changes, giving some changes to language and the way in which we address law enforcement, so it was very minor changes, but those were the policies that we reviewed. Any questions? And those are our minutes, thank you.
Thank you. Moves us to agenda item 14, 14.1, New Business. Before we whip around, I will, I'll start here. We, this is where we usually have an MCIA Legislative Committee Update that Chuck used to give, in, with Chuck being now passing, was ill at the time. Tanya attended the Zoom meeting on May 7, and will also be attending the June 4 Zoom meeting for the Legislative Committee. So Tanya has an update on this.
Yes, thank you. There was no official agenda put out for this meeting, so apologies for the notes, but I tried to be as organized as I could with it. Our meeting was held on Zoom on March 5th from 6:00 to 7:00. Laura Restrepo was present, she is a liaison with Senator Fetterman's office, and she was there to take any questions and provide insight as to the direction that we are moving, state and federally. Two of the initiatives that were definitely talked about on the federal level from the Senate stance was, there was a bill that was introduced called the School Modernization and Hunger Elimination Act, and that is meant to reduce barriers in paperwork, so that students will receive free lunches. That's something we've talked about going forward with our budget, and it is something being pushed now, trying to be pushed through the Senate. How would this expand access is one of the questions asked by the board. Through reducing some of the thresholds and paperwork regarding applications, utilizing universal meal projects, reviewing state performance on implementing these programs, and modernization of the program through technical streamlining. Some of the questions in the board included, does this impact lunch programs from being closed currently, and would there be any limiting conditions in the language of the bill? None of those could be provided at this moment, so we are waiting for an update from Laura, from the office, on those questions. The other bill that has been introduced is the School Lunch Debt Cancellation Act, and this one is pushing that through the USDA, using the Commodity Credit Corporation, by giving them the authority to eliminate school lunch debt. So in some counties, what they are finding, in Pennsylvania, is that some students are not able to even get their diploma because they owe lunch money. And so one of the things that Senator Fetterman is pushing for with the Senate in this bill is to give them the authority to eliminate that debt completely. There was also a reintroduction of the IDEA Full Funding Act, which is something that has been done in the past to try and continue to fulfill the promise of paying 40% of the average per pupil expenditure for special ed. That is not happening. Currently, we are funding less than 12%. So this is something that is still on the table and being pushed in the Senate federally. There was discussion of the budget. Of course, we are still waiting to hear back state and federally regarding budget. It is something everyone's thinking about with school districts making their own budgets. So one of the things discussed was the skinny budget put forward by the administration. Title I is protected, IDEA is protected. However, there would be single separate grant lines now for them. There would be zeroing out some teacher grants, and an addition of 60 million to charter schools. There would be zeroing out some teacher grants and an addition of sixty million to charter schools as the skinny budget is now, it is not passed, but this is what is being proposed. I do have a list of other programs in there in terms of what is being proposed to be cut and what is not. If people did have questions regarding those, I do have all that information, but I will not go each and, through each and every single one right now. There was discussion on the state level of the AmeriCorps cuts, and that our governor Shapiro has joined the multi-state lawsuit against the administration, as we did have six million revoked after it was already approved for distribution. Grant opportunities. This is one being put forth through Fetterman's office and also Senator McCormick's office. They are putting out grant opportunities for school districts to apply for long-term infrastructure projects, so not programming-related, but she was saying that you can send out your proposals to her office, through her. You can go through Sandra as well, through the M C I U, or directly through to the representative's office, and they will consider it. Currently, right now, Fetterman only has water and energy bill applications open, as it is a timed process. However, McCormick, all applications are open. So if we can think ahead and think about our priorities and what we need, we are able to utilize that to try and get some of our projects done. There was an, there was a sense of using our urgency for these projects, especially since no budgets have been formally accepted or approved. There's still time to really get your voices out there and advocate on what you think our public schools need. Currently, right now, cyber charter reform is the call of the day. That's what a lot of people are focused on. Going into next year, in terms of the, the state level, a lot of people were discussing tax assessment appeals being an issue popping up for a lot of school districts, so that might be something going forward that will be addressed. The legislative breakfast, that did happen, they wanted to include possibly more student voices, possibly at the next one, and move the date to make room for more speakers. And the next meeting will be in June. We will have Senator Collette from the twelfth district, and then we adjourned at seven twelve. So like I said, I have a lot more information between those bills and proposals, of course, which nothing has officially passed, so it's still up in the air. Everyone's still figuring it out, but if there are any questions, I will do my best to answer.
Thank you, Tanya. Any questions, Tanya? Thank you for stepping up and doing this, Tanya. I appreciate that in Chuck's absence, and for taking on the June meeting also. And we are delaying any other assignments to committees or things that are changing any of those assignments until after we get a full board again, and then we'll look at that. Meanwhile, we're just choosing volunteers to step in, and volunteers from the board to step in and fill those holes. Tanya, since we're still on you with new business, anything, any other new business?
I just want to wish you the very best of luck. Okay, and thank you so much for being on the board.
Thank you. Anique?
Nothing new.
Patty?
Congratulations. I want you to come back and tell us how you're making out on your breaks. That'd be awesome. The only thing for me is, this is the time of year, we get to celebrate all our students and the achievements, and it's the, the best reward you can is when you see those kids graduate. So there's a lot going on. So congratulations to everybody.
Thank you, Patty. Bill?
Nothing. Thank you.
Dr. Finerty?
Nothing. Thank you.
Earlier this afternoon, I sent each of you an email with an, a, an attachment that Dr. Finerty sent out prior to me, which is the Legislative Platform for the Pennsylvania School Board Association for twenty-five, twenty-six. We have Tanya and Patty attending the Delegate Assembly on October twenty-first, I believe it is, of this year. One of the things that they will do is vote on that platform. So I think it's helpful, one, I appreciate them going, but it's also helpful that they hear our voices as they go there, so they know what the feelings of this board is relative to that platform. Therefore, I suggested that between now and our May twenty-seven board meeting, each of us read that document that is there and come prepared with any ideas or thoughts, or any changes you would make, or at least saying, looks, looks good to me, if we would read that. I've asked Dr. Finerty to add that to the agenda, so we can discuss it then. And again, my intent, Tanya and Patty, is to give you a, a sense from the whole board as to where they stand relative to that, since you have volunteered to go to that meeting to represent us. Any questions there? Ashley?
Yes, I was asked to just make the announcement that the middle and the high school orchestra are closing out the concert season at the middle school tomorrow night at seven P M. The high school is going to be, is going to feature a soloist, soloist from the Philadelphia Orchestra, which is a huge honor. So if anyone can make it, head on out. I know they put on an amazing, an amazing show. Oh, and congrats.
Thank you, Ashley. Jim? And all the way to Texas, Louis, are you still with us?
I am still here. Can you hear me?
Thank you. Any, any new business?
Yes, I'll try to keep it quick. I know for, for me, it's not eight yet. For all you, we're approaching nine o'clock, so I'll try to keep it quick. I had the opportunity to attend the One Grove, One Goal night at the middle school, and I just wanted to give a shout-out to everyone involved. That was a great event. Great to see lots of different community organizations and members of the community out there and present. Wanted to wish the best of luck to Cecilia and thank her for her time, you know, with us as one of our student board reps. And then I wanted to just pass my regards and condolences along to Dr. Nibird's family and loved ones. Was very saddened to hear of his passing in my limited time getting to know him. He, he was a wonderful man, and I think when you look at him being so active as a volunteer and a public servant in the latter years of his life, I think that really, in a time when a lot of people tend to settle down or do less, the fact that he was so active and so engaged, I think just goes to show the, the type of person that he was and how much he really cared about this community, and I know that we'll all miss him very much.
Thank you, Louis. Any other new business? Moves us to Agenda Item fifteen point one, which is our second public comment. Can be about anything. It is not limited to agenda items. Again, we ask that you limit it to about two minutes. Is there any public comment from anyone in the room? Did you raise your hand? That was just a stretch. I thought you put your hand up. No. Anyone in the room? Comments? Anyone at the table? Anyone online? We now ask for a motion to adjourn. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.